Seven o'clock and I'd like to call the city council meeting for the city of Hudson to order for Monday, June 25th, seven o'clock. Would you please join me in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam clerk, the roll please.
Mayor Burchill.
Here.
District one, Morissette.
Here.
District two, Yacku.
Here.
District three, Bernard is excused. District four, Te Winkle.
Here.
District five, Hoggatt.
Here.
District six, Vanslo.
Here. This point in the meeting, we ask for comments and suggestions from citizens present on any items that are not on the agenda. Is there anyone that would like to speak to the council? If not, we'll move on. The consent agenda.
To approve the regular meeting minutes of June 11th, 2012, to schedule a public hearing at 6:50 PM on Monday, July 23rd, 2012 regarding a proposed amendment to the municipal code, Chapter 255 zoning, to allow indoor gun ranges in the B2 general business district and the I-1 light industrial district and the I-2 general industrial district upon approval of a certificate of compliance, to approve claims for payment in the amount of $312,319.83. A detailed description is available in the clerk's office on request and is posted on the city's website, to approve the issuance of four regular operators licenses for the period June 26, 2012 to June 30, 2014, and four regular operator's licenses for the period July 1st, 2012 through June 30, 2014, and to approve the issuance of four temporary operators licenses to be used September 22nd through 23rd, 2012 at the Spirit of the St. Croix art festival in Lakefront Park, to approve the issuance of a temporary Class B operators license to the Hudson area Chamber of Commerce and Tourism Bureau to sell beer September 22nd and 23rd, 2012 in Lakefront Park at the Spirit of the St. Croix art festival, to approve the issuance of a special event permit to the Hudson area Chamber of Commerce for the Spirit of the St. Croix art festival to be held in Lakefront Park September 22nd and 23rd, 2012, and designation as a community event, and approve a reduction in the amount of required insurance coverage to the amounts indicated on their certificate of insurance, to approve the placement of cross-traffic-do-stops signage on the stop signs on 13th Street at Laurel Avenue, to approve proceeding with advertising for proposals for the Activity Island Playground Equipment for Burton Park, and to obtain cost for possibly adding the options of a climbing wall and swing set, to place and file the quarterly report of the EMS chief, monthly report of the finance officer, the Public Utility Commission minutes of June 12th, 2012, and the EMS commission minutes of June 20th, 2012.
Move for approval. Second.
Your call.
Te Winkle?
Yes.
Morissette?
Yes.
Yacku?
Yes.
Hoggatt?
Yes.
Vanslo?
Yes.
Okay. First item of business, we have application for Universal Transportation Services, Richard M. Erdman for taxi cab service license, DBA Ninja Cab Company Airport Services. I think you received it all in your packet. This is a corporation, I think he's owned this now for a couple of months. He's been, he was licensed before, wasn't he?
Universal Transportation had a license with a different owner.
Correct. Different owner. Is there a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. In your packet also, you had applications for taxi cab driver's license, and we had not, seven, recommendation to approve license for taxi cab, period of 7/112 to 6/3013.
Move to approve.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Is that going to just be for the ones that are recommended for approval or?
That is correct. There's seven.
We're going to take up that other issue separate then?
Yes.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, and then consider the denial of a taxi cab license to Ryan Dennison Roberts, recommended by Police Chief Jensen. Is there a motion?
Move to approve denial.
Okay.
A second.
There's a second. Is Mr. Dennison here?
Nobody wants to.
Okay. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Number seven, review bid submitted for the 2012 street maintenance project. Mr. Morissette?
These are the streets that we're looking to do for crack sealing and the flex patching, and we only have the one bid out and come in, so I will move to recommend we approve Farnor Asphalt Sealers for the amount of $97,871.
Is there a second?
A second.
Okay. Discussion. Mr. Tom, got a couple of questions for you. St. Croix Street, we go in from First to 11th. Is that enough? I mean, that's, this will fix most of that?
There's going to be the flex patching that we're going to propose will take care of a lot of the bigger, wider cracks. We'd like to get in and do some patching along the gutter line also.
Yeah.
That, that might be a little, if we're, we might do that in-house or might be a change larger, but, you know, there's some big blocks of really good asphalt on St. Croix Street, so I think we, this repair could make that a pretty good street.
Okay.
Is this just for part one through three, or is this including that alternate one with the spray patching?
Uh.
For the motion is what I'm asking.
The total bid.
So we're, that includes alternate one?
We're just going to go with the base bid. We decided not to go with that spray patching. We tried that last year on Second Street, and we did try it a little bit on Carmichael Road from the Lake Golf Course down to Cooley Road, and I think that, that really worked out good on that portion, but Second Street down by the underpass, that really made kind of a rough road, a lot of speed bumps and that. So I feel that the flex patching might be a better option for St. Croix Street.
Okay. Any other questions?
That's why they didn't include it in the motion. I didn't include, I didn't include spray patching in my motion.
Correct.
So the 97 does not include that 26.
Correct. Right, Tom? That is?
$97,000 was just the total base bid.
Right, without the 26.
Yeah.
Correct. Does that, everybody understand that?
Yeah.
Okay. Any other questions or discussion? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I would thought Russ would be here tonight for the victory celebration.
No kidding.
Application of Russell Evenson's Reserve B liquor and Class B beer license for period 7/112 to 6/3013, DBA Postmark Grill at 225 Locust Street. If you've been around downtown, you saw the workmen there today, or at least I did.
I took a walk after the finance committee meeting, and they're still working in there today.
That's a good thing. So is there a motion to approve?
I move to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion on this now?
It's good to see that.
Oh, it is.
It's going to be going.
30th, I think it has, goes until the 30th?
I think August 30th.
August 30th. It should be. I'm not sure he'll be able to be open by then, but he'll have to come back.
And really, the ordinance, I believe, is 90 days from issuance.
Yep.
So 90 days from issuance.
Yep.
Yeah, but the last motion was August 31st.
Okay.
Right. So we got till the high August. So we got September, we're getting until September now. Okay?
But we also, we also made changes where we saw significant work being done that extended.
Oh, sure, yeah. That's in the ordinance, but the last time it was under the license that was actually approved but never issued.
Right.
Where you got the August 31st. Now it's a brand new license.
So the August 31st is fairly irrelevant anyway.
I think so, but I can't remember the motion exactly.
Okay. We'll check on that.
Yeah.
Any other discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Public safety, revise agreement with San Pedro Restaurant Cafe for placement on dumpsters on city property. I had one question, Mary. Do we want to go three years? Can we make it a, some sort of, if we needed to come out?
Well, we haven't said it's reviewed every year for renewal, so it's supposed to be, it's supposed to be reviewed every year. Uh.
I don't.
No, it's supposed to be reviewed in every, yeah, in three years. Yeah, I mean, we could change it to one year. It doesn't bother me every year and being reviewed.
Let's assume the fire department wanted to expand out, and we couldn't add that spot anymore. I'm not saying that'll happen, but if we needed something there. I just, I think a three year is a long time.
No, that's fine. I, I thought it was, I was, I guess I thought that we were going to do it every, a review of it every year.
That's what I thought.
But, that's fine. It can, I don't have a problem with that, John. I mean.
No, I don't either.
So.
Is that unreasonable to?
It's very reasonable.
Okay.
Yeah. Because you never, obviously, we have parking issues downtown too at times, and we need to.
Yep. Okay.
I guess I missed that, I'm sorry.
So with that addition, is there anyone to make a motion to approve this?
I move to approve with changes from three years, for the, with the change that the agreement shall be in place for one year and reviewed at the end of each year.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Any other discussion?
I do have a question. How did it ever come about that there was a private business with dumpsters on public property?
That's for these two. We were non-council at the time.
I don't think I was.
The agreement was just created by prior councils three years ago, and.
Randy was on.
They came to the city, to the council, and asked for it, and it worked, so. There's another agreement in place with Nordstrand whereby there's dumpsters in exchange for a couple of parking spaces.
Well, I'm just curious if every business down the street wanted to line their dumpsters up along the west side of the fire department.
No. They looked at it and decided it could work. I mean, that's the reason.
But I mean, if another one came, what would, what would our grounds be to say, no, sorry, we're not going to do it for you, but we do it for.
I think we actually had to even amend the city code, and it's totally up to the city to look at the traffic impacts, visibility impacts, each, that's why it had to be a subject of agreement, not just go do it.
Right.
And they did look at it, and same with the Nordstrand situation in terms of how it affected traffic.
I think he brings up good case law for future action with council.
Yep.
I will say that San Pedro's the only one that doesn't have a back lot. They have absolutely no space. Every other lot downtown has the ability to house or store a dumpster on their property. It's kind of an odd exception.
Yeah.
Just.
I don't know where his, where the other option Pete would have, I mean, outside of the front sidewalk, but we're not times where.
Just like everyone else in the back has a built-up area for their dumpster, he uses his for patio instead.
Which was approved at some point, right, by someone?
Right.
So.
Okay. So I don't have the answer how it was, when he built a bit, when he remodeled, it was probably, what, 10?
It was since I've been here, so there's no last minute use, but it was just, they came to the council, the council approved it.
It was case by case. Jim had no argument with it.
Right. Yep.
Yeah, and actually, they changed the city code to allow it, but it has to be done without compromising public health, safety, welfare, shall be governed by a contract, review it, make recommendations, fees, so.
What are you reading that?
212 dash 6D.
Six. Any other discussion on that item? We have a motion and approval, or a motion and a second to amend to one year. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Park board, school district of Hudson Destination Imagination requests for website link and landmark ideas for city parks. Looks like we have a presentation.
Yes, real quick.
Okay.
My name's Roger Davis, and I was lucky enough to be the team manager for the, two things at once, okay, team manager for the Hudson Destination Imagination High School team this year, one of the high school teams, and if I can get this to.
Are you connected?
Well, I should have been, but apparently I'm not. I hate to stall on that. I'll keep going, though.
Well, it should be quickly here. I think they're turned on, aren't they?
Plugged in, though.
Oh, whoa.
There should be an adapter, too.
Pre-consummation. Here it is.
Oh, yeah.
There we go.
Chamber needs to remodel, I'm telling you. Two tables. I'll send you my proposal.
Chairs.
Just like the old horseshoe right there. All right, well, let's see if.
It's a lot longer than six minutes.
Blink. Oh.
Here we go.
What is it?
Let's try one more.
How did you take?
I bet it's going to show up up there and not on my screen. There it is. Okay, well, that's, maybe it'll work. I don't need to see it here. Okay. As I was saying, I was the team manager for the Hudson High School, one of the Hudson High School Destination Imagination teams, which I have two members with me this evening. I have Shawna Green and Aaron Quayre. And let me just quickly just say what Destination Imagination is for those that don't know, but it is, in essence, the world's largest international problem-solving competition. And the season mimics the school year, so in September, Destination Imagination comes out with a number of different challenges. The high school team chose this year to do the challenge that was community service-based, and specifically, they had to do a, identify a community need, and our kids, these kids decided to promote the parks. They felt as though, first, we wanted to appreciate, it was a good time for the community to appreciate what they have, and one of the greatest resources we think we have is our parks, and we thought, looking at our website, at the city website, that we could do a better job of promoting those parks and getting more awareness out there for them. So with that promotion of the park, the kid did a lot of stuff in the last six-plus months of promoting the parks, included going, doing a flash mob at the hot air fair, as well as walking around, his walking billboards. They developed a website that we're going to talk about here in a minute, a QR code, and posted the QR codes for people to scan that would take them to our website. They also developed a brochure, which can be shown, or even handed around, maybe letting everybody look, but brochure is part of the competition that they had to develop. They also went to elementary schools, and in the lower corner there is the display that they developed, which included a tree, a willow tree, that they made out of duct tape, PVC, hula skirts, and baskets. And so at the top of every willow tree branch, there are baskets, and after the kids made their presentation, they left the tree at each elementary school for a week, and the kids were, with forms, allowed to place the reasons or stories about why they liked the parks in Hudson. And after this effort, they collected 233 stories about why kids like the parks here in Hudson. So with that, the kids developed a webpage, which you can visit right now, which is at www.love, no, www.loveourparks.info, not .com or .net, it's .info. So loveourparks.info, and it's not easy to see in this maybe, but you'll notice for every park, they have some pictures that they took, and then there's a quote, actually, for each one of those parks that came from the kids' stories that they had for each park. So we kind of personalize the park, why would they like to come? For example, I think Prospect Park was something like, "Love that park because there's lots of room to play football." You know, that's, and so it's just another reason to try to personalize the website itself, and then if you click on any one of those icons, you go to a park-specific page, and the kids did research on every park that included when it was established, why it's named what it is, other history about it, size, amenities within it, maps for it, photos of it. So they did a lot of research, a lot of effort, put it all on this website. So our first effort was just, how do we not lose all of this information? How can we get this to the city? And luckily, I like to say we planned this, but we didn't, but the city's also developing a new website, so the timing really couldn't have been better, and we met with Mike Kruger, and it was a great meeting, and he's given us a, an FTP site that will be uploading all of our information, all of our research, maps, photos, that can be then incorporated onto the new city website in an appropriate format. So that worked out really well, but I want the council to be aware of, you know, this effort that they've done, and giving the information to help, you know, make this website, the new website for the city even better. Then the other part is why we're really here, which is these landmarks. We call them landmarks, but it's signage. Part of our effort was, well, in typical DI spirit, we like to try to do things differently. That's one of its underpinnings. And we looked at signs in the park and decided, well, if you want to do something different, because we wanted to link this back to the website, we wanted to have something a little bit different. So when you think about signage in parks, you typically think of squares or rectangles or things that are very permanent, things that are built to last, are etched into rock and granite, but they're there forever. Also, what they say is there forever, so once you've read it once, people kind of ignore it over time. So in DI spirit, we just think of doing everything exactly the opposite. So every one of those kind of adjectives or descriptors, we try to say, well, what can be different? We wanted something more organic, something that's dynamic, something that can be relevant over time. So we developed, we first came with this to the park board earlier this month, and what we, this is just a prototype. This is what we used in our presentation to the judges, so it's by no means final. But our final one would be, that we've priced out and got info on, is 14 inches is the size that we did. The one you're passing around is eight inches. But you'll notice several things. One, it's made of wood, so it's a little more organic, a little bit different that way, cedars, but in what's been recommended as the material. We also, you can see that the plate, the face plate within it is removable, so that it can change over time. So again, for booster days coming up, for example, or Easter egg at Hudson Prospect Park, but they can, you can change the text within these signs to help promote that particular activity. So we saw that as a very good thing. The other thing is that we also have QR code there within that, so somebody can scan that QR code again to keep it relevant. If you don't change the text, somebody could be sent to the website to get the latest information, and you'll see that as one of the three examples we have coming. So that was our first design. The concern that the park board raised about that design was that the flip top would be knocked off, you know, vandalized, or we have pinching fingers, or those kinds of things, even though we tried to consider all those things, and we don't want to do things out of fear, but we certainly understand it. So we needed to come today with just basically a different design, which was basically the base plate of that, which is this, which, if you shake it, because it's not really well-done, because not the same person did that as this, but it gives the basic idea. And this is a 12-inch size. Again, we priced out a 14-inch size. So that's the basic design, so one, one thing we would like to have you consider is just which one makes more sense to you. To add a little bit to this is, again, we wanted it to be different, the heart shaped, we came up with that shape. We didn't want it to be a square or rectangle or something like that. Since everything we're putting on these is something that we like about the park, that was a nice universal symbol, easily recognized and made sense, we came up, as you can imagine, the kids had lots of different ideas for different shapes that it could be. So the cost, let's really go there. There, for the, for the, for the flip top cost, we have quoted, including installation, is $475 per sign. For the wood sign, it's, for that sign, right now it's $200, and I think that's going to come down even from that, for that sign. Hudson Daybreak Rotary has been very kind, generous through this and supportive in many ways, mentoring in other ways. They have said that they could sponsor for sure two of those flip tops signs, or all three of the flat or single-piece signs. In fact, if it came out a little less, we would actually do four signs of the flat one, single-piece one, with the fourth being a blank plate, so that city could at a later date decide where they'd like to put that and what text to put in. So with that, I'm hoping that got distributed is the text for each that's been proposed and locations for each. That should be in the packet grade. So this should follow with what you see, and this, what's showing right now, though, is just the fat, the single plate, 14 inches on each side, is what you see on the overhead there. Okay, so first, we have three parks that we're proposing locations for. White Camp Park, Lakefront Park, and Prospect. White Camp is our newest park, Prospect's our oldest park, and Lakefront's probably our most popular or well-known, so that's kind of the logic behind that. We start with White Camp, and interesting enough, also, I wish we could say we planned it this way, but it was good timing. The tree survey just got done at the beginning of this year, and if you take the information from the tree service, oh, and that identified DBH, so diameter breast height of the trees and types of trees, you can use that with a growth factor, and you can estimate the age of trees. And going through all those, all that database that we did, we found that the oldest tree happens to apparently reside in our newest park, White Camp Park. It's a bur oak tree that stands right next to the playground. So part of the text that we wanted to do differently as well is not, you know, I love history personally, but we didn't want to have history that, we want to have a different kind of history or facts that would be engaging to people reading it. So White Camp's a nice example, and the text that we proposed is, as you look forward from this spot, the large tree you see is a bur oak tree and is one of the oldest trees in Hudson. An estimated age of 240 years, this wonderful tree began growing in 1776. So that's the kind of text we're looking for. Then the location is a location that is near the park bench, right at the corner of the path. On the left-hand side of the upper picture, you can see the corner of the playground at White Camp. So we thought that it's near a park bench where somebody would be residing or sitting, so it's a nice location near that. Also, being around the corner there of the path, we could just kind of square that off with dirt, put your, put the post in there, there would be no added maintenance in terms of having to mow around something or any of that kind of stuff. Plus, that faces right, you know, we'd have it facing right towards the tree, and that bur oak tree is that large tree that you see in the, in the background of that picture straight on from the circle where we proposed the site. So that's our proposal for White Camp, both text and sign location. Then we move on to Lakefront, and Lakefront, a little wordy, but here we go. Do you see the bandshell from here? Its archway-shaped design was inspired by the old toll bridge archway sign that still spans over the entrance to the old toll bridge located just 50 feet south of this landmark. Of course, that assumes you like the place where we're proposing to put it. Lakefront Park hosts many events. Check out the schedule for free concerts and other events by scanning the QR code below. And then that gives the relevancy of the QR code and how we can use that. Even if we don't change the text, it can still keep things updated. And our location for that is really best location we felt to recommend is right where signage already exists. So again, minimum disruption, you can see the bandshell there from that location, so it fits, you know, very nicely there, and again, least disruptive that we could see. Final one is Prospect Park, and Prospect, oops, I went the wrong way. Prospect Park is, of course, the oldest park in Hudson, established in 1885. One of the many unique features of the park is the gravestone marker for the first white settler buried. Go to Silas Snell and see if you can find it, and the marker is very near where this is. Afterwards, check out the view of Hudson and scan the QR code below to see what Hudson looked like from this spot 50 years ago, along with other interesting facts. Part of the research the kids did, they uncovered lots of photos, and where we've proposed the location is right near the swinging bench that, of the overlook there. So from that location, somebody could, again, scan the code with their phone, and they could hold the phone up and see old picture and compare that with their live view as Um, so from that location, somebody could, again, scan the code with their phone, and they could hold the phone up and see old picture and compare that with their live view as they're standing up there, and even maybe slide through several photos and see changes over time. So again, trying to be a little bit different, make it a little more engaging, more relevant over time is, has been our whole point, and tying it back to the website that can keep things updated. That's our unique approach to changing signs and, and how people interact with them. So with that, I think we're done. We thank you, and we're more than happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Questions, comments?
This one costs two-hundred bucks, and this one costs four-hundred bucks?
Yes.
This is, do you have this professionally built?
Professionally built, yes. It's a, yeah, he's a professional, but he's doing it on his own time. And we're still looking. But that's not professionally built. None of these are. Yeah, 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 yeah.
I was gonna say.
Oh, yeah. No, that's my point. Yeah, no, that was just for performing, you know, that's just what we...
Demonstration purposes.
Yes, it's just a prototype, not meant to be...
What, did you talk to the park board, bring any comments of, about maintenance, Tom? And this would be easy to split if vandalism, you know, leathered.
I'm just saying that... Yeah, if we make it smaller, so it's harder, you know, that it doesn't have so much overhang, cause it's on a four-by-four post, right? And so if it's an eight-inch like that, then very little overhang. You'd really have to hit the post as much as anything. The only negative on it is the size of the font or how much text you put in. The text plate will be smaller. So the eight-inch one that you have, the flip-top, that would probably be about, I think it's a four-inch by four-inch square that you have, um, available for writing. So that's the only negative, uh, in going smaller, but the positive is, again, that's where you try to combat vandalism. We can make it thicker, you know, it can be two pieces of wood glued, well, wouldn't wanna glue it, but we can get a thicker piece of wood, that'd be harder to, to really, um, break that way. But understand that anything can be vandalized, I guess.
Any question, any other questions?
Do we need a, does this fit the sign ordinance, Danny? Or would we need to make modifications? You can do, prove anything in the park?
And we will say that, you know, height and size and things, we looked at other parks and, and seems to fall right in line with what others have done.
There's one more park to add to your list, Meadows Park.
Yes. Yeah, that came kind of to our attention as we were in the midst of...
Well, there's Williams Park, too, and...
Williams is not on here?
Williams is on there.
Okay.
Webster is on the brochure.
On the brochure, yeah.
Webster is not on there. Will, uh, Meadows is definitely not on. Webster's not on there, yeah. We, we kinda went, yeah. Those two are not on, but again, when we started this and what we had, you know, we had a timeline to go with.
Did you go wood just to keep it more cost-efficient, or could do a metal plate?
We did wood, uh, again, to be different. I, I think that's the bottom line, it's just a little more organic than, than what you traditionally see. We're not tie, you know, I think, I can say that having any of the signs and the idea, the concept be approved and, and see these actually come to fruition is, is grand. It was easy for us to work with wood and, and, and get wood. We knew that material was readily available. Um, so that's the only reason why we went.
I think it's a great idea, neat idea, but I just, it's gonna get broke, and it's gonna get weathered.
Definitely gonna weather.
Mm-hmm.
Any other comments? I think you guys have done a wonderful job. It looks good. I think it'll be a nice addition to our parks. I don't know if we need a motion. Authorized to continue, yeah. Through the park, through, Tom, yeah. Is there a motion to approve this, and...
I'll move to approve, uh, continuing to work on signs for the parks.
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Appreciate your presentation.
Good job.
Good job, kids.
Yeah, thanks.
Okay. Unfinished, uh, unfinished business or update on projects? I think you have a, I think you, everyone has that. I don't think Dennis is here. Tom, do you wanna make any comments to the update on projects that are, is there? I don't know if everyone's aware, but Dennis Posler is going to be resigning from, uh, his position, and will be taking another, uh, position as a CF, CEO of another engineering company in the Twin Cities. So he has about two weeks left.
He'll be at the next meeting, and he said he'd talk to you about it then, too.
Okay, so just for your information.
Good for him.
Yep. And Karen, I think, I believe will be assigned to our account, and she's very capable and has done a good job for us. Anything else, new business? Communications from the mayor. Again, to remind everyone, this weekend is our Fourth of July celebration. We have the parade on Saturday and fireworks on Sunday night. So come to downtown Hudson, get free parking on Friday by Hudson Patch. Is that right, Mr.? Okay. You're welcome. We also received a thank you from our senior citizens, uh, board, uh, Mr. Virchell and council members. The senior citizens, uh, board of treasure has informed me of your recent gift of six-hundred-and-twenty-five dollars, which is a quarterly gift we give to the seniors from our room tax dollars. Thank you for all of your support for local seniors. There's been a blossoming of revitalization interest in our programs at the senior city, seniors center. We are very pleased with our newest site manager. Our, our board strives to cooperate with the many service groups in Hudson. So thank you from the senior citizens group. That's all I had. Any other councilperson, alderperson, comments? City attorney? City administrator? Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
We're adjourned. All in favor?
Aye.
We're adjourned.